So let's get moving, please. All right. Good evening. This meeting is called Order. So first, I'd like to introduce our, our new planning board member Nancy Hess. Today we lost Ozzy Osborne. So, so yeah, Nancy, as I've been asking most new members, I know you've been here before and served with board quite a long time. But if you could just give us kind of a brief overview of your background.
Okay. After a brief interlude of off the board, I'm back on the board to continue my 20 plus years of service for the community. Resident of Valley Lodge Estates and I'm currently employed as a professional planner for the statewide planning program. One of the things I run is the municipal education program for local officials. I'm also a legislative liaison for my department. So when things are proposed in the general assembly, I follow them. And I can help with legislative things that we need to comply with. And in my other time, I take care of an elderly mother and an avid kayaker and beach goer. And I'm a ski instructor in the winter.
Great.
Glad to be back.
Well, it's great to have you back on board. Thanks. So the first item of business tonight is approval of amendments. I made a motion to approve the minutes of June 2025.
Please. I made a motion to approve the minutes of June.
The second.
All right. Any discussion on those minutes? All right. There's no discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, I'm abstaining. I wasn't at that meeting.
Abstaining for both amendments.
All right. Next item is the minutes of June 24th, 2025, regular meeting minutes. If I can get a motion to approve those, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June 4th, 2025.
Okay. Any discussion on those minutes? Awesome. Yeah, I don't have anything. Nice, nice job, Susan.
Blessing, I'm pretty proud of myself.
All right. Then if I can. Uh, no further discussion. All in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, on to old business. First item of old business is the preliminary plan public hearing, which was continued. Uh, for Perry Hills Conservation Subdivision Punch Bowl Development Corporation, 118 Jane Street, North Providence. For a six lot minor subdivision with a private right of way located at Zero Punch Bowl Trail, Lot 5B, Lot 5.1. Five of the proposed lots will be supporting single family homes, while one of the proposed lots will be a set aside as open space for the proposed development. All right. So, Talia, maybe if you can just give us an update as to where we're at with this.
Sure. I'm also going to give a brief statement in relation to the web posting issues that we've been having. So I know that the public has come to expect material to be posted to Clerkbase, which is our practice. But I sent the materials to Clerkbase on Friday. They did not receive that email. I circled back with them this morning. They did not receive that email either. But the materials should be posted to the website within short order. But I would also note that if any member of the public ever has any questions about any applications that are before the planning board, you are more than welcome to reach out to me directly to view plans or stop by the office to look at materials. So again, I'd like to apologize that those materials are not up there, but I tried my hardest to get them on there. But sometimes technology does not always work with us. I would note that we did not actually have materials in relation to this particular agenda item until today as well. So they wouldn't have been part of the packet that went out to the board anyway. I did provide them to the planning board earlier, about maybe three, fourish hours ago. They will be made part of the record and they will be discussed. But I imagine that they will probably be attached to the next agenda as well for informational purposes. So I just wanted to let that be known.
Thanks, Talia.
You're welcome.
So, so before we hear from the applicant, I'd just like to say, so as Talia said, the, the board has not received any information. Talia sent it out three hours ago. I can say, at least I saw Nancy says she didn't see it. I have not seen it. So I have no issue with like to present, you know, at a very high level. But I'm not sure exactly what you're presenting, but if it's, if it's technical data on well tests or, you know, that we've been requesting. I would suggest that, you know, perhaps the applicant will request an extension so that we can, we can review this. Have our peer review, take a look at the information and then we'll, we'll be in a better position to be able to, you know, to, to discuss this at our next meeting. I don't, I don't believe anyone in this board is going to be able to discuss at a technical level, at least any, any of that information.
Yeah, I understand that and I do agree with that because the information, which I just got yesterday.
Okay.
Uh, I believe it was emailed to Mr. Ferrari, but that's, you know, just emailing it to somebody one day before. It's no guarantee that they're going to have time to review it. And I have no idea if he did or not. I have copies of the materials which were provided to me regarding the well testing of qualitative and quantitative. I can't make heads of tails of the darn things. So I wouldn't expect you or anybody else to do that. However, um, I am, by the way, my name is Kelly Fercas and I'm representing Punch Bowl Development here. And I'm coming into this a little bit late in the program. I spoke with Patrick Freeman, who was the engineer on the project today. And he was not able to make it tonight because he's got matters over in Jamestown. So I'm here all by my lonesome. From what I understand, however, and please correct me if I'm wrong. He has appeared at prior hearings and pretty much presented the guts of this proposal, which at least in my view and looking at it is not terribly complicated. I know that the, the big issue outstanding is, uh, you know, wells. And that, I mean, it's, it's wonderful to have all this information here. And having any clue what it actually says is quite a different story.
Right. That's where, that's where we're at. And you aren't correct in that, you know, we, we, we addressed the, I would say, we addressed the overall civil engineering aspects of this project. We, we had a peer review done. We, we addressed all the, the comments that our peer reviewers had in our comments. So I, I think we're good overall with the civil engineering. What we were, were waiting for was the, the well test information that was required by our APod ordinance.
Yes.
So with, with, with that, I think what we're going to want to do is we're going to want to forward that information for a peer review. And then have our peer reviewer provide comments and hopefully get responses back from your engineer prior to, to the next meeting so that the board will have those comments, responses, have all the technical data to review prior to the next meeting. So we can have an educated discussion on that.
Yeah, that's, that has to happen.
Okay.
That has to happen. Now, I made a bunch of copies here, not knowing who got what. Does anybody need them?
I will take a hard copy as well.
About all eight.
Well, I'll just say, just send them on over. You're handing it out. I need it anyways. We'll take one and pass it around.
I'm going to make a crazy suggestion. From what I understand, the public has been coming here quite often. And only to be told not tonight, go back home. Um, I don't know how many members of the public here are looking to voice their views on this for good or for, or for not. Obviously, it's your call, but I have, I would have no objection if the public wishes to speak at this time, even without the benefit of the law.
Yeah, no, we, we can, we can do that. And I kind of jumped the gun too. Usually I give ground rules for the public hearing. I wasn't sure to what extent we're, you know, continuing this public hearing, but, yeah, I'll, I'll give, I'll give the, the public an opportunity to, to, to speak once we're, uh, once, once the board is done.
Okay.
Uh, now I forget what our, what our timeline is. When, when do we need our decision?
So the, so the public hearing was continued until today with an accompanying extension for the decision to be rendered on the 12th August.
Okay. So that's, that's, that's most likely not going to be possible.
Well, it would have to be at the acquiescence of the applicant.
Right.
They'd have to agree to an extension.
We so acquiesce.
Okay. What, I'm trying to think what a reasonable date would be to push that out to. I mean, we're obviously going to need to continue the public hearing to a date certain, which is probably going to be, is August 12th? Is that our?
The longest 12th is our next meeting date. And then the, after that, we have, I have to pull up a calendar.
Come at night.
Okay. I'm, I'm thinking if we meet on the 12th and, you know, hopefully have a good discussion, iron out any issues we have with the, uh, with the well test, then we should be in a position to have a drafted decision by our meeting September, I'm thinking.
I think that we have a second meeting in August. Just have, let me look it up again, just so we have this specific date, so we can continue it to a specific date.
August 26th and then you have September 9th.
Okay. So are we thinking, so if we, if we continue the public hearing to the 12th and then the decision to the 26th, does that sound reasonable?
Sounds perfectly reasonable.
Is it reasonable that we'll have peer review of the material back by then?
So let's see, what, so we're on the 22nd. When, when do you, do you have someone specifically you're, you're giving this to?
Well, so the materials were submitted to Bob Ferrari yesterday, who's Northeast Water Solutions, who does a lot of the, well, he does all of the work in relation to the water line. I know that in the past, we've used Crossman Engineering to review some of the civil elements. And I know that they do have some experience with this kind of work.
So Bob, so we submitted the Bob, Bob is, so Bob's going, as our peer reviewer?
Well, so it's, it's a little bit unusual because he's not technically considered one of our peer reviewing engineers. He is a PE, um, to my knowledge, and he obviously is very knowledgeable about water. But I would not necessarily categorize him specifically as one of our peer reviewing engineers, because we don't have that kind of existing relationship.
Okay. Do we have a way to get to, to, to him through, through someone else? Or how are we going to do this?
Well, so I think that it, I mean, they've already submitted it to Bob Ferrari. I don't have any problem with Bob Ferrari reviewing it. Again, he's not one of our technically peer reviewing engineers, but he could be, I mean, I, I'm sure that he could probably provide the requisite information necessary. But if you wanted to have it designated as one of the peer reviewing engineers and they work with Bob Ferrari, that might be.
Yeah, and I can say, I mean, I, we, Bob is, Bob has presented to the board on, on, on water issues. And I mean, I can say, I have total confidence in his expertise.
He participates in our TRC. But in terms of, of whether or not he's specifically one of our peer reviewing engineers, I would say, I don't think that he necessarily falls into that category. He provides services to us and we have an existing contractual relationship with Northeast Water, but.
Okay. So, I mean, with the applicant having an issue with continuing to the, to August 26th and then having a decision by the first meeting in September, I'm just thinking, I think Nancy brings up a good point that by the time we find a way to administratively get to our peer reviewer and then actually get a thorough peer review of this. And then typically the peer reviewer comments go back to your engineers and then your engineers provide responses. That all takes some time. Then the board needs to see that generally a week in advance of, of, of the meeting.
That needs to happen though. Let's do it.
Okay. I, I'm just thinking rather than, I know this, it's been a long time coming. It's, it sounds like we have the information we need. Now we just got to get the smart people to review it. So rather than have everybody show up again on the 12th, let's, let's look at the 26th for the continuing the public hearing too. And then what's the date in September?
Uh, 9th.
September 9th would be the, you know, move the decision to.
Mr. Fercas, you're, you're fine with those dates?
Yes.
You requesting those dates?
I am requesting those dates. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks for keeping it straight for us.
So I'd say we'll keep those in mind if you want to hear from the public now.
Yeah, I'll do that since, you know, we're going to keep the public hearing open and continue it. I give the public a chance to speak and then we'll, the board will make that motion later.
I'll write it down now so we don't forget it.
Thank you. All right. With, with that, um, yeah, so ground rules for the, uh, public hearing for public discussion. Yeah, if, if you could just come up to the podium, give your name and address, limit your comments to approximately three minutes and address your comments to the board, please. And, um, and, and with that, uh, yeah, anyone would like to speak, uh, please come up to the podium.
Bob Sayer, 62 Punch Bowl. First, I'd like to welcome Nancy back, fighting for you since that happened. Secondly, it's a breath of fresh air to have an attorney show up for that Punch Bowl Development, whatever it's called. And not claiming to be an expert on wells and water. It's, it's refreshing to know that. Uh, I would like to know who the company was that did the water testing. Was it local company? Or did they have to go out to Kansas City or whatever the other attorney had told us?
I don't know. Is that on the, must be on the report.
How can I have one of those?
It's A&amp;J Well Company Incorporated from Slatersville, Rhode Island. So if they're in Rhode Island, they're local, right?
Yeah. All right. Well, we'll continue on, I guess. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Do we have anybody online that you can see that is raising their hand?
No one with a hand raised.
Okay. All right. Um, does the board have any here, uh, any further comments, questions at this point?
No, not really. Got a chance to look at it.
All right. Well, with that, I guess I'd take a motion to, uh, you know, to continue the public hearing and extend the, uh, the decision dates. If someone would like to make that motion.
I'll try.
I'd also like you to incorporate, or you could technically have them as two separate motions, but to definitively submit this material that's been submitted today for peer review. Just to memorialize that particular component of the conversation.
Okay.
All right. I'll make a motion to, at the request of the applicant, to extend the public hearing to our August 26th, 2025 meeting on the preliminary plan for Perry Hills Conservation Subdivision, Punch Bowl Development Corporation, 118 Jane Street, North Providence, Rhode Island, for a six lot minor subdivision with a private right of way located at Zero Punch Bowl Trail, Lot 5B, Lot 5.1. Five of the proposed lots will support single family homes. One of the proposed lots will be set aside as open space for the proposed development. Also, the applicant should definitively submit the information that they presented here today to peer review.
Yeah, one of the town's peer reviewing engineers.
Town's peer reviewing engineer.
And also, did you mention the extension for the decision?
No.
Add that as well, please.
Oh, and that the, uh, and extend the decision for this same, uh, plan to September 9th, 2025.
As requested by the applicant.
Again, as requested by the applicant.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. On to, uh, second item of old business. We have the requested removal of inclusionary zoning requirements and return of P and L of, uh, master plan decision, September 11th, 2018, amended September 14th, 2021, from the Preserve at Boulder Hills Phase 2 and final plan decision, June 12th, 2024, the Preserve at Boulder Hills Phase 2B, submitted by attorney Emerico Scungio on behalf of his clients. The Preserve at Boulder Hills LLC, the Preserve at Boulder Hills 2 LLC, the Preserve at Boulder Hills 3 LLC, the Preserve at Boulder Hills 4 LLC, Castle Residences LLC and MTM Development Corp. All right. So I know during our last meeting, we had a discussion on this request. Uh, there were some issues regarding how we could handle this that we asked, uh, you know, our, our, uh, our solicitor, Mr. Zangary to provide a, a, uh, analysis and opinion on. I believe Chris did provide us his analysis and I believe he's had some discussion with, with, with you, Rick.
He has.
So I don't know if, Chris, you'd like to give us an overview or you want to let Rick, uh?
Well, I'll let Mr. Scungio start and then take it from there.
So Emerico Scungio, I represent the Preserve. Um, we were here the last time and I think we, what we need to do is compartmentalize it as it relates to the master plan and as it relates to the final plan approval for Phase 2B. And with respect to the master plan, if I may address that first, and I'm somewhat disappointed because it's one of the few times I did write something in advance, provided it to Talia and no one got to read it. So that'll teach me. In any event, when I was here the last time, I asked the board to consider removing condition 15 from the master plan, Phase 2, amended master plan decision, which was dated September 14th, 2021. And that proposal says, or that condition said that a written proposal to meet inclusionary zoning requirements shall be submitted at each preliminary plan slash phase application that includes dwelling units. And that condition haven't been amended at that September 14th, 2021 meeting. And I had argued to the board that the compliance with that provision requires that that provision be eliminated. Because as of now, there is no inclusionary zoning ordinance in the town of Richmond, having, that haven't been repealed in May of 2024. And that compliance with that provision was simply that there is no need to comply because there is no ordinance. At, in, in reply to that argument, I believe the chair, uh, uh, asked if it was, asked the solicitor if it was that simple. And there was an issue with respect to whether or not there were vested rights that may prohibit the board from doing that. And I did some research about that and in fact found that vested rights do not run in favor of the town. They run in favor of the applicant. That's supported by the enabling legislation and it's supported by your own land development and subdivision regulations. There were two specific land development subdivision regulations that address that. One addresses it for subdivision regulations that change and the second, that's at one point, section 1.4.1. And one addresses it for the vesting of zoning provisions in 1.4.3. And that provision says that when does, it, it defines when there is vesting and to whom it vests. And it's best, if those two decisions, those two provisions clearly show that it vests in favor of the applicant. There's nothing that vests in favor of the town. So there's nothing vested from the town's perspective that the old ordinance needs to be enforced. And in fact, under 143, it specifically says that on a complete, um, application, that subsequent view of that application, um, is governed by the zoning ordinance that was in effect at the time of the complete application or the time of the granting of that application, unless the applicant chooses to comply with the zoning ordinance currently in effect. And in this circumstance, the applicant chooses to comply with the zoning ordinance that is currently in effect. And that zoning ordinance, as it relates to inclusionary zoning, is no longer in existence. So it's clear that, that the, the, your own regulations allow for the board to remove that particular provision. Because as it, as we stand here now, the inclusionary zoning requirement is no longer in existence. And your own regulations allow for the applicant to choose which zoning ordinance to be, uh, applied to the situation. In this instance, also, there are no applications pending. We're looking in the future for the phase applications pursuant to the master plan approval, not to any pending applications. That's what I'll get to with respect to the, the final approval, which is Phase 2B. But simply because of that regu, that regulation and because of the election, the, the right that's given by that regulation to the applicant to choose the zoning ordinance in effect as it, as it exists today, the applicant is seeking that in the master plan approval, section 15 be eliminated from any requirement going forward on a going forward basis. eliminated from any requirement going forward on a going forward basis. And again, I think that the, the condition clearly says that it's going to be submitted at the time of the applet, the preliminary plan or phased application. So it's something in the future. And when we apply the existing ordinance to the future, at this moment, there is no inclusionary zoning ordinance. And we're seeking that that provision be eliminated from the master plan decision. If I could move on to the.
So just one, one thing, uh, so, so I, I read that, that one point four point three, the vesting of zoning provisions, I, I, I read that. I was just, if you explain to us, you know, where the wording is that says it, it, it's in favor of the applicant, not the town. I mean, I mean, I, I, I read it and it says, so it says, if the administrative, administrative officer is certified as complete application for a master plan approval of a major subdivision or land development project, or an application for preliminary plan approval of a minor subdivision or land development project, the application shall be considered substantially complete and the zoning ordinance in effect on the date of the certificate of completeness shall apply and subsequent review and approval of the application. So I, I, I mean, I, I thought that meant that the boards, that the, the board, the board had to apply that to our approval.
Unless the applicant chooses to comply with the zoning ordinance currently in effect.
Okay.
So the applicant chooses to comply at this point with the zoning ordinance in, in effect as it relates to the master plan approval that exists today. And I think that I, I had, I don't know, no one had read it, but the, it would avoid the circumstance in, with respect to the master plan because simply what we could do is let the master plan expire and then recreate the, the, a whole thing again. I don't think, my client certainly doesn't want to go through that.
We don't, we don't, we don't want to do that.
I mean, that's the simple answer. We could, we could, we could.
It was so enjoyable going through that process.
We could for respect to the master plan approval, let it expire. It's set to expire. It's one year is up September eighteenth. We can let it expire and then come back again and on be under the existing ordinance. So I think that provision is there for that purpose is to avoid that circumstance.
You know, so, uh, yeah, Mr. Zangary explained this to me, but so so when you say you're going to, you're gonna base, you're gonna basically comply going forward, you want to, you want to comply with the new zoning ordinance.
Going forward, I want, because the zoning ordinance is no longer in effect, I want that condition fifteen eliminated from the master plan decision.
But will you be complying with the new zoning ordinance?
The new zoning ordinance is, has been repealed.
Okay, so when we say ordinance, that's the, the inclusionary zoning ordinance has been repealed.
Correct.
But Chris explained to me that always, he believes that term zoning ordinance is the collection of ordinances.
We're going to comply with the ordinance except for the inclusionary zoning provisions. But that condition says.
I'm saying. All the other, there may be other ordinances that have changed and you're saying you you intend to comply with any changes.
Any existing changes that are favorable.
As of.
As of the date of the application.
Okay.
But, but the issue is, the issue is, this provision, this provision specifically says meet the inclusionary zoning requirement. That's all we're looking to get eliminated tonight. The inclusionary zoning requirement, because as it exists today, there is no inclusionary zoning requirement.
So.
Let me just interject very briefly on a, an important component of this, which is that even though the materials were not posted to Clark Base, they were provided to the planning board. So the planning board knows what's being discussed. Just because it wasn't posted to Clark Base does not mean that they have not received it. So they, they have, it's been submitted to them. I cannot read their minds and know if they've read it or not, but it has been provided to them. So I just want to make sure that that's on the record.
Yes.
That's the, that's the, that's the only thing. Before we get a little bit further into this whole discussion.
So Mr. Chairman, I, I think what you were asking, and I think we're in agreement, but let's find out. If this board were to consider and in fact remove condition fifteen, then on a prospective basis going forward, the applicant would be, as they're choosing to do, we think they're going to comply with the new ordinance, which means the entire, the entire zoning ordinance, which does, which does not contain, which does not contain inclusionary zoning.
Which, which means the inclusionary zoning ordinance provisions, that's all I'm asking for. Is that that provision deals only with inclusionary zoning.
That's why, that's why we're going up. I think we're talking two, two different things. You're talking about eliminating just inclusionary zoning ordinance and.
Condition five fifteen.
Understood.
As I have to comply, my client has to comply with the inclusionary zoning requirement.
And, and if the applicant is complying and saying, we're choosing to go under the new zoning ordinance, that's the new, the new ordinance as it applies today, all the orders.
I'm not, I'm saying I am only want to, I want that provision which deals with inclusionary zoning removed because there is no longer an inclusionary zoning ordinance. Never ordinances were in effect at the date of the master plan approval still be made in effect if we have vested rights to them. I'm not waving those.
I didn't know you got to pick and choose which ones you want.
Well, your, your decision is very clear. It says.
Now, can I leave that up to, you know, or?
So what? Yeah, so what, so all right, if I understand Mr. Scungio is saying he just wants this removed, but he's, his position is that he's vested in all the other zoning ordinance and rights he may have pursuant to the ordinance in effect at the time he was vested. So he's, his position is we're vested as to everything. This, we're seeking the new ordinance because it doesn't exist anymore.
Okay.
Prospectively, prospectively, it's also my understanding based on discussion that uh, anything that's already received approval, Phase Two B has already received master, preliminary and final. So it would not apply to Phase Two B.
An argument for that.
The whole, this was.
At this point, no, sir.
All right.
Okay.
So it would, it would not apply to Phase Two B. It would apply to any other applications and any other phasings to come after today is, or is that changed?
That's correct. Other than I have an argument that it should also apply to Phase Two B for the, for the monies that have not been paid.
Go ahead.
So if you want to hear that now.
Sure.
So Phase Two B is a, um, has twenty units in it. And back in June of last year, twenty twenty-four, um, we came before you and we developed a a scheme by which we would pay or satisfy the inclusionary zoning requirement. Um, upon approval, we would pay for one or satisfy, there were three total units that had to be inclusionary with the twenty unit scheme. So upon the, the approval of the final plan, we were going to satisfy the, the ordinance that was in existence. And then, and we find that, we find out at the time that that ordinance now had been repealed. And we did pay, I think it was sixty-eight thousand or something like that, thousand dollars to the, to the town for that. And then we said on the seventh building permit, we were going to, that we would designate another means to comply with the ordinance. And then on the thirteenth, we were going to comply by, uh, another, uh, either another unit or, or fee in lieu. Um, it's that approval is in place. However, you're asking the applicant to, I think that, I think that the provision of your, of one, four, three applies to any amendments uh, or any applications that are pending, including this application and can be brought, can be read to conclude that with respect to the second and third payment under the scheme on the approved Phase Two B, that we also, uh, are seeking that that be, uh, eliminated from the decision. And then I had also asked in, um, that with respect to the payment, that the, the board, um, issue its, uh, conclusion that the fee be returned. We understand that that provision with respect to the paid fee in lieu would be something that we, we would need to bring before the town council and we would, at that point, do that as well. It should be noted that at the time of the payment, the ordinance was repealed. And at the time that we, uh, revised the decision with respect to Phase Two B, the, uh, decision was repealed. And you're asking the applicant to pay on a repealed ordinance, something uh, that he really doesn't need to pay. And I think that pursuant to the does, uh, one, four, three, that you could also include and you have discretion to include the elimination of the second and third fee in lieu payment on the Phase Two B preliminary plan, which is incorporated into the final plan. And would ask that you also consider removing that requirement from, on a going forward basis.
So did, did you have, did you have final plan approval of Two B prior to the inclusionary zoning being repealed?
No.
Bill, can I ask Chris a question?
Sure, please.
Chris, if an applicant objects to a component of their final plan or any decision rendered in relation to their application, what is the proper mechanism for them to seek to amend or change that particular approval? Is there a time limit on that?
They would take an appeal.
All right.
Yeah.
And when does the appeal need to be filed?
I don't off the top of my head, but it's, if it was over a year ago, it's expired.
Thank you.
So I'll, I'll address Mr. Scungio's argument about one, four, three, the, the ordinance regarding vesting. My interpretation is different than his interpretation. Once all the approvals, you have master, preliminary and final, that's it. You're, they're vested with that old ordinance. And that goes for Two B, the, the permits that haven't yet been pulled. Prospectively, if you were to, if you were to amend the master plan or remove that condition, I think you can, I think you have the ability to do that. And based on one, four, three, in our ordinance, uh, you certainly could, we could stand by that as, as an appropriate decision in light of the fact also that it was, it wasn't just a modified inclusionary zoning ordinance, it was actually repealed. Uh, but that's at your discretion. So I'll, I'll let, obviously you're going to decide that. But I disagree with Mr. Scungio in his interpretation of one, four, three as to, as to his claim about Phase Two B.
It's your, your, your position is that the event should not necessarily apply to Phase Two B for for the, the permits that have not been issued on.
I'm saying that because of the approvals have been finalized, you've approved it, they're vested under the old. So they're, they, they're, they've got the inclusionary zoning on those. Because the applications have not yet been provided on any Phase Two C, though it would, if you chose to, to take away that condition, it would not apply prospectively. So, so in, in some, in some parts, I agree with Mr. Scungio's interpretation and others I, I disagree.
Which I, I pointed out, which I'd like to point out again, is you're requiring the applicant to re, to comply with a repealed ordinance after the ordinance has been repealed with respect to the two next payments under the Phase Two B plan.
I would note that it was repealed, but it was part of the master plan approval. And when it was vested, it was part of the zoning ordinance at that time.
Yeah, I mean, me.
Oh, I know, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, and last thing, I, I didn't say it. You addressed it, Mr. Scungio did, but with, with regard to somehow a refund of, of the fee in lieu that was paid last year, you don't have the authority to do it. Um, so I would submit that you cannot do it. Um, if they're going to seek to, to get that money back, that would be something they could, again, seek through the town council and let them entertain whether that's something they're.
Okay, so that's definitely not in the purview of the board, obviously.
I say no.
Yeah, twenty years, the board has never had anything to do with fees. It's always been the town council per the charter.
Yep. All right, with that, other board members, questions, comments?
I believe I understand it, uh, you know, the, the approval was vested on the old for Two B and, and Two C, but the, uh, board should, um, look at things new. But.
So I would note that to date, I have not certified Two C complete. I've certified it incomplete. There's been a couple of iterations of that submission. I most recently reached out to Attorney Scungio in relation to uh, whether or not they're going to be bifurcating the proposed, uh, medical center from the other components of Two C. I have not yet heard a response in relation to that, which is fine, but I would note that I have received Two C. It's just, it has not yet been certified complete for that particular reason.
Anyone else on the board have any questions on this?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment based on my professional planning experience. Um, you are to be, yes, the vested rights go in favor of the applicant, but then that also puts a responsibility on the applicant to hold to the regulations in place that guarantees that vesting. So I understand what is being asked here. I have a long history of review with this particular application and I remember the master plan approval probably in twenty eighteen. Um, and I concur with our solicitor's interpretation. I think Mr. Scungio has a unique interpretation, but I've never seen where applicants can pick and choose which parts of the zoning they want to apply to their project. I do think going forward, it might be fair to say that that condition doesn't apply since that ordinance doesn't exist anymore. But if you want to keep vested rights, you're stuck to the regulations that were in place when you got those rights.
Chris, is there, is there any basis to seek relief from one component of the zoning ordinance but retain vesting under the others? Or is that something you'd have to look into a little bit further?
No, I think you can do it.
Okay.
Yeah, you could do it.
On what grounds?
On the grounds that it's been repealed and on the grounds of one, four, three. So he's saying that, that says the applicant can choose to comply with an ordinance provision.
Well, what I'm, what I'm specifically asking you is not the zoning ordinance as a singular document. I'm saying.
One part.
One part of previous zoning ordinance. If you can say, okay, I want to comply with eighteen through eighteen point one through eighteen point seventeen, but not eighteen point eighteen, but then eighteen point twenty through the end of the zoning.
I don't, I don't have a case, and I looked, I don't have a case that as Ms. Hess pointed out, that runs in favor of the town for vesting. Although he does have an obligation, he, the applicant, does have an obligation to adhere to the vested rights. But here I think the situation is unique and we've got a, we've got an ordinance. I don't believe every town has regarding vesting. At least I don't think they all do. So ours is a little different, that it does allow that choice. It does say with the zoning ordinance currently in effect. You could read it either way. You could read it as the whole or one. So I'll let you, I'll let you decide if you think it's appropriate to read it in that way. But I think prospectively, certainly, I would say you were on solid ground for doing that.
So what I'm really trying to drive down at, because I think it's very important that the board understands this, is that so if the board were to say no on having to comply with eighteen point eighteen, which is what the inclusionary zoning ordinance was, um, if they would still be vested under the remainder of the zoning ordinance that was in effect in twenty eighteen? Or would they in total be subject to the zoning ordinance that's in effect now in twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, I, I'm fine with saying they're still vested with twenty eighteen. I'm fine with that.
With the exception of the inclusionary zone.
That's it. They're, yeah, they're saying we're choosing not to comply with the zoning ordinance. Looking at it singularly, I think you could certainly read it that way.
So they're looking for reimbursement in Phase Two and that it not apply in Phase Two B and Two C.
He's not there, no.
He, uh, I believe the Attorney Scungio is asking for reimbursement on Two B.
Two, oh, is it Two B?
No, hold on, hold on.
There's two things, there's master plan and then Two B final.
It's my understanding you, they were looking, the applicant was looking for reimbursement on one payment for Phase Two C, and they're asking that.
To be.
To be.
Excuse me, Phase Two B. And they're asking that any future payments required, which will be roughly two more not apply.
Mm-hmm.
That's his request.
Right.
But the board can only make a recommendation because we can't do anything. But the board can only make a recommendation because we can't do anything with the fees, right?
You don't, you don't have the authority.
Right.
No, no, no. As to the payment that's already been made last year, I say you don't have the power to refund that or even make that decision.
You make a recommendation to the town.
No, he's not asking for a recommendation. You don't have the authority to give one, I don't think. The second thing is whether or not you are going to grant the applicant's request that for phase two B, the inclusionary zoning ordinance does not apply. If that, if you were to decide that, then in fact, the the two payments in the future, they would not have to pay. Yes, okay.
But if we decide that, we're only deciding on future payments, even though there's already been a payment on phase two B?
Yes.
Phil, could you repeat? You, last month, you explained why it was repealed. Can you kind of reiterate that again? That was before my time.
So I know, I know the 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 major reason that the board chose to repeal the inclusionary zoning was because the 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 way the state had written the requirements, the 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 if we kept the inclusionary zoning, where I remember it is, we would have been subject to some very significant density.
Increase of about sixty-five percent.
Yeah, on on developments. So we chose to repeal the inclusionary zoning for that reason and our primary vehicle for providing affordable housing is the comprehensive permit. And we thought that that was satisfactory for providing affordable housing in 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 the town, which we've utilized that, uh you know, extensively, and it's 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 been working. For that matter, we have pre-apple for us tonight on that. So so with that, tonight, Chris, we, so I guess we need uh we need a decision on this, and we choose to, and it's 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 fairly complicated. I'm wondering if it might be best, I mean, there is there really a, is there really an urgency on this? I'm thinking it may be best that the board would like to have our solicitor draft a decision for us on this, so that we can address it during the next meeting, and I've been kind of punting on this, but ra- rather than try to iron out the details of this tonight. And it'll give the board a chance to, you know, sit back, review the decision, review everything that we discussed here tonight, and then bring it up at the uh the next meeting.
Your only urgency is if the board elects to will go the payments on two B, it may be building permits that are applied for between now and then that could result in the next payment being due. That's the only urgency with respect to that.
Is there, is there a meeting in two weeks?
Yeah.
Yes, the next meeting is the twelfth.
I mean, I I I would feel more comfortable doing that. I don't know how the board feels about that.
I agree.
Sure.
Let's just be a draft decision. I would say definitively request that solicitor draft it because.
Yeah, this is definitely more of a Chris thing.
Into legal territory that I am not even remotely to prepared to opine on, and I have relied on.
Obviously, Chris will, Chris will send it by you before he sends it to us, of course.
So you're asking for a draft decision, which I would send, I would send to Mr. Scungio as well. How would you like it to go? Is it, is it, is it gonna be a decision? I don't, I don't know what you're.
Can we vote on at least the direction that we're leaning?
It's just what you that's what you said with the approvals.
What if we accept the findings and the memorandum that Chris presented to us as a basis for drafting the decision? Because he has his points of wrong, his findings in there.
I think that's a great uh recommendation.
Is is, would would the decision inclu- would the decision be? All right, the first thing in the decision, the the refund of the first payment already made for phase two C? Is that going?
Phase two B.
See, I ask you, I, yeah, thank you.
The the payments made for two B, obviously, we we don't even have, the ones that have already been made, we have no um if you're not even under our purview, so.
And they picked one of three.
But you can, you can include include that in the decision.
Okay, should be, because it was asked for. Um the second is a.
I think, I think, uh you know, the board can correct me or reject uh wrong, but uh basically, I think we're siding uh more towards your position, uh Chris, than Mr. Scungio regarding.
It it's it's not my position, it's my interpretation.
Interpretation.
I have no position, you.
I mean, and ob- and obviously, I
Do what you want.
Decision that way, we could, I mean, we we can mull it over and we could always change it, but you know, at least.
Are you, is the, would the board like to see some language regarding the removal of condition fifteen or not?
I.
Not necessarily. I mean, you start by, you know, I would prefer just, you know, add the, you know, expand on the conclusion.
All right.
Yeah, I would prefer to not see the condition fully removed. I I mean, if we can, you know, amended or add, you know, some some wording that moving forward, I I think the condition we I mean Nancy alluded to, but we spent a lot of time on the master plan and working out conditions of approval, and you know, I think everybody was satisfied with it at the time, and that the ordinance isn't repealed, but.
Would you be interested in in motions on the discrete elements of this in relation to two B? And in relation to on a going forward basis, would that be helpful for the planning board? I'm just thinking out loud here. If it wouldn't be, disregard. If it would be.
The request of the applicant is to remove condition fifteen.
So I can tell the board that if it's not removed, we're just gonna let it expire and we're gonna reapply. So we're gonna go down that road.
Which?
Which is what we need it removed, basically, because there is no ordinance go on a going forward basis, and that condition contemplated the future. It contemplated was applications in the future comply with the zoning on the the uh inclusionary zoning ordinance. There is no inclusionary zoning to comply with. So if it's not removed, we're gonna let it expire and we're gonna reapply for phase two approval.
I mean, you keep saying that, but then.
It it's economics, Phil. It's a, it's, you're talking about two million dollars.
Can't comply with an ordinance that was repealed. I mean, the, we still know what the ordinance is, and it's still.
We have the right under the US regulations to choose which ordinance to apply, either the new or the old, and we want to apply the new. And that's a right that's given to us under your regulations. It's simply what we want to do. We have that right. It's written in your regulations.
But the only difference, Mr. Scungio, right, is if if they amended to say prospectively, it will not apply, then the payments don't apply. The only difference is if they amend it to be condition fifteen, prospectively does apply. The only difference is, I think we discussed it was, if in fact the town were to pass an inclusionary zoning ordinance next year or the year after, then it could, it would still apply. So that was that, that's the sticking point for the applicant.
That's the, that's, the point is that if it doesn't apply now, and if it is not in this decision, we have vested rights that you can never bring it back. Now, you can do it by eliminating it, or you can do it by we'll just let it expire and we'll come back and.
Why can't we do it by amending it? It is, it's Chris said, uh.
And it doesn't apply, as long as it doesn't apply to any of the fa- phase two master plan approved uses, that's fine.
I mean, it's kind of, it's.
Why aren't we retaining it, though? What 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 purpose? There's no other reason to retain it.
I I think we'd like to see all our options laid out, what Chris can draft. But what if the state changes the enabling of legislation once again and says you have to have it? Is that something we need to consider at this time?
Because on the ordinance.
And we are amending our master plan decision fifteen again, when inclusionary zoning now becomes a requirement of the state?
That's a burden on, yeah.
These are all like, really.
No, it could, we would have vested rights. We would have vested rights if we came back and you granted a new pro- phase two, you could not impose that condition.
Right, you would be vested.
And we would be vested regardless of what you changed. So it's the same thing. Either we do it again or we do it now. Doesn't make sense to do it again.
Man, honestly, the only reason I'm kind of against just removing the condition altogether is because we spent a lot of time on that, and it was a condition of approval at the time. I don't see a reason to remove it. I have no trouble amending it, clarifying it, whatever we can do, and I'll leave that up to.
I understand you spent a lot of time, we did, and it was an ordinance in effect, but it's no longer in effect.
I know.
You can't expect us to comply with the.
But you already built complied with that master plan in that condition.
Correct.
I have no problem like not removing it, but just amending it and saying it does not apply moving forward. I hope there's a easy legal way to do that that gives you assurance, but that's where we, what, so that's, that's the idea, Chris, man, honestly, I.
I understand.
I I don't think the board, and I I can tell you, I don't want to force you guys to, you know, take the nuclear option. Um and and a- as much as I love, like, deal with preserve, and it's it's entertaining. I I I don't want to go through another master plan, and and you don't want to either.
That would be with new councils that's sitting.
Because that's gonna be pretty costly. I mean, your engineers are gonna be thrilled.
But it may be economically feasible, unfortunate, or fortune, unfortunately.
Mr. Scungio, how about this as a, an idea? And I want to thank Mr. Scungio, who's available. We had some productive discussions, and uh thank you.
Thank you, too.
You're welcome. I'll draft some language, and maybe between you, me and Ms. Salvador, we can come up with an amendment or a vehicle that that gives you the protection you're looking for. And the board can make their determination without removing it, but get you where you need to go. Is that?
That's fair.
Fair enough?
Yes.
So it would, so it'd be continued to the next meeting? I I mean, I'll, I'll put it, this will be at the top of the pile.
That's fun.
It's in two weeks.
The twelfth.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, do we need to vote on this, or do you do you just consent this, that you have a direction?
I'd like you to vote.
Yeah, but yeah, vote, vote to, yeah, vote to continue.
Workshop a.
Continue the meeting.
Motion.
Continue the public hearing.
It's not, it's not, it's not a public.
Continue for, continue the hearing, because it was.
It's not a public hearing.
This was not public?
No.
Continue the hearing.
The discussion.
The discussion.
Discussion, yeah. Or you want to.
So I'm not gonna look at Pete anymore. I'm gonna look at everybody else, because Pete is always the one making decisions. Valiant effort, very much appreciated, but. Carl is.
I'll make the motion.
One, one of these two.
We're giving Nancy one, one day.
So I make a motion that we continue the discussion of the here. Very hill, the uh.
D two, isn't it?
D two, uh for the uh master plan decision, September eleventh, two thousand eighteen, amended on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the preserve at Boulder Hills, phase two, and final decision June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, preserve Boulder Hills, phase two B, submitted by Attorney Americo Scungio on behalf of his clients, the preserve at Boulder Hills LLC. The preserve at Boulder Hills two LLC, the preserve at Baldes Hill three LLC, uh preserve at Builders Hill, Baldes Hill four LLC, Castle Residence LLC, MTM Development. Well, until next meeting, which is Sep- uh.
August twelve.
August.
Twelve.
Twelve of this year.
You will ask?
Uh and on the um the fact that our solicitor will prepare a draft decision that he will review with Mr. Attorney Scungio and present to us.
And his successor.
And his, yes, and his successor at the next meeting.
Success.
They choose to film.
Second, any discussion on that motion? All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
All right. Is that it? Rick, is that the end?
He'll be here next morning.
Right.
Good time in my mouth, being pulled back in.
Okay, on to new business. Uh we have a pre-application for a comprehensive permit, switch road partners, uh comprehensive permit, two ninety-nine switch road uh partners, E O Box thirty-eight, Wakefield, Rhode Island, uh for a comprehensive permit application consisting of the creation of eight new lots or development, creation of a lot for the existing single family home on the property, and the creation of one open space lot. So Talia, if you'd like to just start us off with a brief overview of this.
Sure thing. So we have before us a pre-application for a comprehensive permit. So under current state law, which deals with comprehensive permits, the applicant shall be required to submit only a short description of the project in writing, including the number of units, type of housing, density analysis, preliminary list of adjustments needed, as well as location map and conceptual site plan. But like other pre-applications, you're not going to be making a decision on the application tonight. This is just for you to have some interface with the prospective applicant, well, not the prospective, with the applicant, um to discuss their design as depicted on the uh board behind you. It is a development for eight new lots. There is an existing home on the property, which should be carved out for its own lot, and then there will also be an open space lot. Uh there will be, there has been a proposed path from the proposed lots to uh where the property abuts Sandy Pond. And there, i- it's a somewhat unusually shaped lot. It's somewhat triangular. The closest shape you could probably uh ascribe that to be. But because it's pre-application and because of what the state law requires, there's not as voluminous amount of information for you to review. But this is what has been proposed. The applicants are here. I'm sure they'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have in relation to uh what they're proposing. There is a existing historic cemetery on the lot, which they will provide a buffer for, uh and because of how the site is there are a fair number of wetland areas on the property adjacent to the Sandy Pond area, so um there, there is some uh belief that is being sought in relation to the uh lot sizes. But um because this is a comprehensive permit, two of the new units will be affordable. And they will be designed in a colonial style, and they'll contain three to four bedrooms. So that's, that's pretty much a general overview of what is being proposed here. Again, I'm sure that the applicants would be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, uh Douglas D. Simone, my son Stephen, who is uh my partner, just just got here from the Narragansett, he's on the Narragansett Planning Board. So we're we're proposing on like a a lot eleven, uh this development. Under the Affordable Housing Act as it exists today, uh the allowable density there is approximately thirty-four units. Uh we did have a concept plan at the very beginning, uh which showed condominiums. Um we believe that this is much more appropriate than the thirty or thirty-two units. I think they had a plan with thirty-two units. We think this is much more appropriate. What we're trying to do is similar to a cluster design. Lots are all a little bit better than a half an acre. Um we've conducted soil tests out there. There's no water table, but test holes are twelve feet. There's no water table. Um we're able to meet all required BEM, uh wetland setbacks. Uh we have proposed uh a right of way uh through the upland, which would terminate at a sandy beach on Sandy Pond. We don't know at this point whether or not we're gonna keep that. Um we're kicking it around amongst ourselves, uh and our engineers. Uh and the question is how much that'll slow us down at wetlands. The houses that we're proposing are are homes that we've built uh in many other places. We built that same that same house at a subdivision in Tiven, and I believe it was twenty-four of them. Probably built that house five or six times in Jamestown and. Probably built that house five or six times in Jamestown and five or six times in Narragansett. It is a very, very popular house. Um, it provides a great deal of space for a family. Um, and it's an inexpensive house to build. So while we would have two affordable units and we're proposing them at a hundred percent of AMI, not a hundred and twenty. Uh, we expect those houses to sell in the vicinity of three hundred and fifteen to three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The market rate units, uh, you know, we'll sell them for what the market bears, but frankly, uh. You know, we're not selling houses there for eight hundred thousand dollars. We expect to sell houses there in the. You know, mid-fives. That's, that's, we think is, is the market there. And we think it's an opportunity to create some really very good housing there. Uh, the existing house is a really special piece of property. And we chose to show this to you as one development rather than spinning off. The house lot through an administrative subdivision and then coming back later with the comp permit. We thought it was much. More appropriate to show you the whole thing now. Uh, we are much further along in the engineering process. When we do get to you with our application, you'll see that uh, the team will include Dupree Engineering, Ed Pimentel. For the planning consulting and John Chevlin for the uh, traffic study. Uh, there is over, I think there's over two thousand feet of road frontage there. Um, so we are, we do wanna utilize the road frontage. It obviously minimizes the amount of disturbance. It minimizes the amount of drainage that's necessary. We anticipate being able to handle all the drainage from the roofs through roof leaders and. Uh, infiltration trenches and we anticipate being able to handle the driveway runoff with stone trenches. Uh, the percolation rate there is uh, outstanding. Um, the wells, we're meeting all the setbacks, required BEM setbacks for wells. Uh, we have not identified any wells. Uh, any other residential wells in what I would call close proximity to the development. Uh, your idea of close proximity of mine may be different and I recognize that. Um. There is an existing well at the, at the, at the house that's there now and I can tell you it's difficult to draw that well down. Uh, we anticipate that these wells will all be gravel packed wells. Um, we anticipate uh, that we will reach water at about eighty feet and. This is a pretty good guess, but I know you may want more than a guess, but we anticipated it eighty feet. And so you're gonna have, you know, eighty feet of casing and then uh, we anticipate a, a lot of ground, a lot of water. If you have any questions, I'm certainly able to, to answer them.
I think this is a good start.
Yep, it's a start.
One, one, one of the things that the, uh, I mean, you, you kinda have it already. You have quite a bit there, but one of the things that our ordinance requires is a, is a uh. Existing conditions, resource plan, uh, cause it is a conservation, uh, you know, design.
Yep.
We like you to go out on the property before we do the site walk generally and say, hey, I mean, we know some of that is obvious. There's water features, but. Large trees, erratic boulders, things like that that you, that you wanna like, you know, keep. Um, it looks like, looks like you're pushing all your development right up to the front of the road. So a lot of that might not really apply here, but.
There are some, there are some large trees out there, uh, there's virtually no boulders. We do not anticipate any blasting. Uh, there's no boulders there. It's, it's sand. Uh, you know, it's, it's really good soils. I'm sure you're more familiar with it than I am. Uh, the house, we, we are really interested in uh. In preserving that house. Uh, if you go into that house, you, you think you're gonna see Frank Sinatra and the Rat Back. It's, it's a really, really unique place. Um, and uh, so the development, but basically. You're not gonna see that house from the development, from the, from the houses. You're not gonna see, the houses aren't gonna see the existing home. Um, so we tried to do a minimalistic approach for a comp permit. Instead of, uh, you know, five or six, uh, large contract, not large, but five or six condominium buildings with. You know, six units in it. We thought was inappropriate. So we opted for this.
Glad you did. I forget, and do we have any, uh, no ag overlay or no, uh, uh, K pod here?
Is this a R three?
R three, it's R three.
We could know in about two seconds because the zoning map is up and you can put on the overlays.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted, I, I don't know if you guys checked or anybody, just wanna make sure you don't have any, you know.
I'd have to.
Any agriculture overlays or.
I have to, I have to ask, we'll do him who's not here today.
Michelle's saying, uh, no.
Did you put on the app overlay? I don't think that it is. Yeah, it's not prime.
Okay, that makes it easier.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Steve. Sorry, I just have one thing to add about the trees.
Could you just state your name for the reference?
Absolutely, Stephen D. Simone.
Thank you.
Um, so where are the houses, the majority of the new construction be taking place up, up near the road? Was actually previously cleared by the previous owner, so that I, I was out there to dig the test holes and the majority of that is. New growth, you know, very small diameter. I'm sure there are some big trees out there too, but the bulk of where we're gonna be at is. Was previously cleared. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, thanks. Dana, you had a question?
I'm, I'm trying to get my bearings. So the backyard is on Switch Road.
That'd be the, the front yard is Switch Road.
So there are other driveways will be from Switch Road.
Correct. Yes, the majority of them.
Actually, we've, we've, we've gotten a little further along. I think that plan is showing seven new structures on Switch Road. We've, we've got a little further along and we've got six on Switch Road. Ultimately, we're gonna propose to use six on Switch Road and two on Sandy Pond Road.
There's, there's a lot that's like over by where, uh, Peter, Peter's.
There's a guard rail. If you're coming.
Yeah, right there.
If you're coming, there's a, there's a guard rail on um, Switch Road. Approximately two hundred feet from the intersection of Sandy Pond and that guard rail, you know. It's gonna stay there. We, there's no way to get a driveway into that lot. So that lot is when you come part of the open space. We're gonna create another lot over on Sandy Pond Road.
Yeah, it'll be adjacent to that lot you're highlighting now.
So what is, what is that line that intersects the back of the fourth house up? I'll slot on. Right with that arrow. What, what is that?
Yep. Yeah, that's the proposed walking path that we're, we're not sure about. We'll see what DEM has to say.
Is it currently there?
No, 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 it is not. It's proposed. No, it's not.
So if somebody walks down there, what are they looking at?
So right now, there's nothing there. There's, there's trees, but if we were to put it in, when you get to the terminus of that walking path. There's a little sandy beach on Sandy, uh, pond there.
I don't know if you, if any of you have ever seen that pond.
It's awesome.
It's, it's, I, I, I gotta be, it's spectacular. It's spring fed. The water is crystal clear. Uh, we thought it would be nice for those residents to have access to it. So at the very beginning, we had that walking trail. While we talk, we may not include that walking trail. We haven't made a decision.
You can either put it in or the, the kids are gonna put it in.
The right, you need to go to the pond. It's gonna happen anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's just pure nature. Um, question if that pond might show up on DEM's any natural heritage maps, if there might be any species in it.
Certainly check.
Cause a freshwater kettle hole pond is unique.
Yep.
And usually has those rare critters in them.
We'll check.
The other thing I.
I'm telling you, Nancy, we're staying as far away from that pond as is possible.
Mm-hmm.
We are coming nowhere near it.
Yeah, you guys are, cause gen- generally we look at this and we, you know, we, we try to minimize curb cuts on, on roads.
I understand that.
You know, that, but then in that case, we push all that back into the wetlands and obviously that's not gonna.
Yeah.
And the other concern I've had would be the drawdown of the wells affecting the pond.
Yeah.
Um, if we could get some information on that in later stages.
Yep.
Um, because if it is a special aquatic habitat, then we wanna be careful that the aquatic stays in the pond. Um, the other thing on the existing conditions, the map that you submitted, it was hard to see the road.
That's very.
They're just like contours and stuff.
Super preliminary.
Yeah, so we need to see the roads and we need to see what's on the other side of the roads. There's a couple houses on that stretch. On the other side of the road that should, should show up.
You're gonna get a very high level of engineering.
In relationship to driveways, try not to have them match up to existing driveways. We've had.
Thank you.
Um, developments in the past where residents have complained about that.
Yeah, they got headlights in their houses.
Yeah, yeah, you avoid that.
Yep.
Are you anticipating traditional septic and are you gonna put them towards the rear of the houses?
Yes, no, the septic's actually, septic's in the front.
It is in the front, alright, cause.
Far, as far from the wetland as is possible, as far from the pond as is possible. And the wells, the wells are in the back, correct. Wells are in the back.
And, and what's on the southern boundary of the property that goes from Switch Road across the pond? What? Who will say, who's the abutter?
We're one of the abutters.
We are, there were, there were, there were four, there were four property owners own frontage on that pond. Uh, see that lot that is immediately south?
Yeah.
We own that lot as well.
So that's vacant as well?
And it's vacant lot as well. Um, there is that piece where your arrow is right now. I couldn't tell you who the owner is, but it's an, I think it's about eighty, eighty or eighty-five acre piece. Uh, with a great deal of road frontage on both Sandy Pond Road and. Sandy Pond, MTN, what is Sandy?
Woodville, Woodville.
Yes, Woodville Alton Road. What, is it Woodville Alton?
Just Woodville.
Just Woodville. Lot of road frontage.
There is a Woodville Alton, but this was.
Eighty acres there. Um, and then there was another piece, you've got it. Um, where there was a house and they actually have a little dock on the pond, which is the only structure. Uh, that extends into the pond.
That's the one.
Yep, right there, yep, yep.
Um, a question about the cemetery.
Yes.
Are there any deeded rights to access to the cemetery?
There are no deeded rights to access to it. We have no problem providing access off of Sandy Pond Road.
Okay, does it, sometimes there's historical family rights that you don't know about? And they need a path to get there. They don't have to act.
Anything in the title, but if it's something that the planning board wants or thinks is a good idea, we'll make sure it's there.
Does it have a, a historical number? It does.
It does.
There's actually a revolutionary war.
Yes, there is.
Yeah, so we, we definitely want to.
Yeah, so we have all experienced.
I know.
You remember?
I wasn't involved. Don't go, it wasn't.
My Charles Town days when I.
Yes, we had a hundred and five native burrows, Native American burrows.
I will say it's not, it does not appear to be enclosed, but they do have a twenty-five foot setback around that, but I know that that is sometimes. Question that people have. So we'll get additional information on what is actually in that cemetery.
Yeah, it's located right here. I turned on.
Yep, it's on a knoll overlooking the pond. And when I say a knoll, I mean, it's probably up. Twenty, twenty feet from the surface of the pond. It's, it's, it's a beautiful location.
Can you see that cemetery from the road?
Not really, no, no. You have to know where it is, but it's tended to uh, regularly. Uh, I've seen, uh, July fourth, there were some, you know, little flags placed. So it's tended to regularly. It's, it's very visible. It's got the placard on it, the sign, you know.
Number thirty-eight, the Jonathan Maxon lot, I think, what it's called. Jonathan Max, or I think it's Max, but Jonathan Max was the revolutionary war veteran.
So we'll need to schedule a site walk.
I would anticipate we will be filing our applications with the state DOT.
So we like, so we like the site walk as, as soon as possible.
Okay, yeah. So you want the site walk even before we file the formal application?
The whole conservation design works is we, we, we like to get out to the site. So the board can look at it and this looks pretty straightforward, but you know, gen- generally, I mean, when we get out to the site, we find. Even if it's subtle things that affect your design, the sooner we can like tell you about that.
Shouldn't agree more.
Better, cause once you get further into your design, it's tough to turn back.
We had actually hoped to be here last month, but your agenda was so full, it was uh, impossible. But, but we are pretty far along in the engineering of this place right now. I mean, we're. I would anticipate we will.
Yeah, I hate, I hate to say it, but like our conservation design basically tells you, don't do that. I mean, I know this is, I know this is probably in your mind, it's easy, but. We, we've had a few, well, I don't think there's gonna be one, but we had a few where. The applicant comes in, they do all this stuff with engineering, then we say, uh, no, you can't do that.
Yeah.
Like, and then, you know, it's, it's, it's waste of money. So just, just to get out, let's get out there together, see the site.
At your convenience.
And, yeah, we can, you know, discuss it tonight. I mean, the nice thing about the summer is usually, um. Evenings or are you still? Evenings or?
I work as much as you do.
Well, this time of year, you can usually either do after work or the other thing is early, early Saturday mornings, but you know. Then Saturday mornings, you know, this time of year, people are away.
Saturday mornings are tough.
Evening works.
Evenings?
I'm just waiting next, from Thursday to the third.
Okay.
Evening, as long as it's not a Monday.
Evening, not a Monday.
Evening, not a Tuesday. And I'm not here, I'm at town council.
Carls gone.
From Thursday to the third and then I leave again on the night.
Yeah.
Twenty-nine footballers.
How long is? Three weeks.
What's everybody else's?
Yeah, and I'm not here, and I'm here pretty much except for times that the uh, uh, fair is going on. We're gonna go up to the insurance.
Right near it and, you know, hurt enough of the.
Got it.
You'll be back the Wednesday.
August third, yep.
August sixth is.
Oh, I'm going, so I'm going the sixth to the eighth.
So you're looking at.
You guys are welcome to do it without me. I've got the, let's see where's that.
We could always ask the applicant to give us a couple of prospective dates and then I can go around.
Yeah, you know.
The best thing is for you guys to pick a date because we'll make ourselves available to you.
Alright.
You may not even need us.
Alright, why, why do you, uh?
Let me share your calendar with me for the month of August and then we'll pinpoint some dates.
Everybody, yeah, everybody take that for action at some point since, since Talia, you know, what dates you're available.
So August.
And then Talia will coordinate and then we'll work something out. I mean, it's a small property and we should be able to get.
Yeah, it, I mean, the whole area of development is, what is it, two acres? No. We got eight, no, it's times a half.
Four agents, four agents.
Yeah.
I'll pay for other lot, on, uh, lots in indoor.
No, not yet. Oh, God, no, no. I can do that if you'd like. I can put a little sign on them.
That, that is helpful for.
It is.
Yeah, we just gets, gets something, you know, if it's close, you know.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, easy enough.
And the, the property corner on the.
You're gonna do the name?
The lot number one on.
Yeah.
Not in those clothes, but.
No, it's the way he came from a planning board meeting, sorry.
Yeah, the part, the corner where, yeah, the existing house is, you know, just to get, just to give a general idea, like I said, there's a.
I'll get close on the property corners, even a lot nine, wherever you think it's gonna be. Yeah, we have a pretty good idea. It's actually gonna go right, the lot, all right there, it's gonna go right next to it.
This, this plan is really preliminary. We've got the survey completed, the topography completed, so we, we can put some pins in.
Alright, alright, so.
I, I get some flags up for you, yeah, yeah, that's easy enough.
What, what else? What else you guys have, anything?
Where's the driveway for the existing house?
Uh, it's not depicted on that plan, uh, clearly. It is. Well, see that plan? It's showing the house almost on the lot line, which is incorrect. So it's, there's a four car garage there. See the, see the structure?
Yep.
That's, it's.
Looks like the, looks like the.
No, it, it, it comes back south again, back to get south to the garage. Yes, it's, it's a little bit south with it.
Is it kind of like a fork on Switch?
Is it kind of like a fork on Switch Road?
At the end of the driveway, yes, it does, yes, exactly. That's the one.
That's it.
Just path to, past the golf.
There's actually a placard out there that says two ninety-nine.
Whole number will be helpful too. Whole number.
The for sale sign?
That's the one, it used to have a for sale sign on it, yeah.
Got here's what the house says.
Yeah, oh, it's gorgeous.
There's actually a. House, not a house, it's, it's called a sauna house, there's a structure. Right at the pond's edge. You could never build today, which is awesome, I mean, really.
It's perfect for breaking through the ice and.
You got a sauna headache. Take a sauna in the winter and run out and jump in the ice.
Your five fifty price tag, I think went up to six fifty.
That does seem low.
They're not big houses, you know, we're not gonna build.
We like to sell houses too.
Good to go from one to the next.
All right, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to updates and informational items, so we do have a legislative report.
So I apologize, I was not able to create a memo, there were many different balls in the air that included me from doing that.
That's good, because I was gonna say, I don't remember seeing it, because I never got that far.
Yes, but there are quite a number of change that have been. Made to the zoning enabling act and the land development.
Isn't that great, so we get to have another exciting.
Material to review, I did not forget about the specific and objective criteria for special use permits either, but. That is quite an endeavor in and of itself, but yes, you will be getting quite a few. Revised components of our land development subdivision regulations and our zoning ordinance. So be prepared. I know you're going to enjoy this so much.
With nothing more, reviewing for a notice and writing ordinances.
It's time for fall and you're scotched by the fire.
You will have this, I am currently working on the summary of the legislative session for the Division of Statewide Planning. This is a memo we put out every year at the end of the session and generally the municipal planners all wait and salivate for it. There were ten bills from the Speaker's pass, the Speaker's patch, package of affordable housing bills. There's one that creates a housing land bank program, which is optional for Rhode Island housing. The Department of Housing is now the Executive Office of Housing. And the Department of Housing is authorized to create a housing champion designation program. But then there's six revisions to zoning enabling legislation. Two to Low and Moderate Income Housing Act itself. And then a big revision to the local planning board or commission and the subdivision and land. Development Act, so.
One of the biggest changes is that pre-applications are now solely at the discretion of the applicant.
Oh, that's just foolish, that is so foolish.
And they added master plan back in the comprehensive permits if the applicant wants to do it.
So they get rid of the pre-app because they don't wanna burden the developer. And then, then the developer shows up cold with the planning board and then we're like, no, that's all wrong. So like that, that's real, that's real smart. So once again, the state has come up with some real stupid stuff to impose on, you know, the towns, great.
Also, they're, they're allowing people to. They're allowing the development of co-living spaces, which are basically like ponds that people can live in and have shared. Restroom facilities and shared kitchens, which is basically like having, yes, having a college dorm for adults. Which.
Hopefully.
Yes, not, not sure of the utility of that particular. But it is something that can be allowed.
And then another interpretation of that is that the old fashioned term borders, you are allowed to have borders in their house. Is now co-living.
But you cannot convert, or you're not necessarily able to convert an existing home into any kind of co-living space, which is. Appreciate it, glad that you can't just. Yeah, I, I saw that that passed and I was intrigued to put it.
This I hope to get out by the end of the week, I'm waiting for approval of my associate director on it, and then. We'll post it on the web and put it in the APA newsletter and let everyone know it's up.
Awesome.
The bridge committee met again and they set up their priorities. And now working on action steps, so it's been very active. Nothing to report other than most aggressively forward.
Okay. Dana, are you, are you attending the land trust meetings now?
I attended a land trust meeting, yes.
All right.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna say I passed up a time to you, although I just kinda, yeah.
Well, my thought was interesting. We have the people that join us and they're hoping we'll say yes. Land trust has to recruit people to see, introduce you to them and hope they don't say no. And then I brought up a piece of property, good deal discussion about that piece of property. It was already very complicated, but it'd be a significant impact if it went. One direction or another, intersection of Hoxsey Road, no, intersection of James Trail and Hillsdale.
A little familiar with that, we won't get, we won't get into detail, but I just wanted to. You are the, you are the liaison now, the planning board liaison to the land trust.
Well, it was entertaining enough, so I'll, I'll continue.
Okay, thank you. All right, unless there's anything else, gladly take a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving to adjourn. I'm last in, first out.
All right, thanks everybody.